August 28, 2017. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Mello?
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor LaBeau.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Counselor Hilton.
Present.
Counselor Shabbat.
Present.
Counselor DiMediris.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Business brought before the council consent agenda. CA 1A, no council meeting minutes available. CA 2, receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions. 2A Cemetery Commission. CA 3, correspondence, receive and file. 3A, North Smithfield Town Council Resolution opposing H. 5475 and S. 0481 Act relating to subdivision of land. 3B, North Smithfield Town Council Resolution in support of H. 6204, an act relating to maintenance of town roads, restoration of roadways, utility lines. 3C, State of Rhode Island Office of Housing and Community Development regarding community development block grant. C. 3D, RI DOT regarding traffic improvements, traffic light on Fish and Boogamash, and installation of crosswalk at RI 177 and 1791 Main Road. 3E, Charter Review Commission invitation to submit proposals/comments to commission on September 18. CA 4, approval of tax assessor abatements. CA 5, Town Administrator acceptance of grant agreement and submitted budget for Rhode Island state-designated award for senior services. CA 6, Town Administrator/Chief Lloyd, approval of Blue Cross/Blue Shield Rhode Island ambulance provider agreement. CA 7, Town Administrator/Chief Lloyd, request approval to hire part-time clerical position for fire department, impact statement attached. CA 8, Town Treasurer, request approval to hire full-time payroll accounts payable position for treasurer's office. Any items that council wishes to remove?
I would like to remove CA 3E.
CA 3E. Any others? Do I have a motion for the remainder of the consent agenda?
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards?
Motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda minus CA 3E.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Ananamous. Ms. DiMediris?
CA 3E is an invitation from the Charter Commission to join them at their September 18 meeting and to submit any proposals. I don't know if it's appropriate, but I suggest we put this on the September 11 agenda. Maybe we can all go home and think of what our proposals we would like and discuss it at the September 11 meeting. This is an ongoing process, so I'm sure this is just the beginning, but I think we should be prepared for the September 18 meeting.
Do I have a motion to accept CA 3E?
So moved.
Madam President, I just have a question.
Ms. Ryan?
I have a question. So, this is for them, for us to go to the Charter Review. Were you thinking that the Town Council would come up with some possible charter revisions by then?
Well, at least start it. At least start it, because they're asking us to join them.
Yeah, okay, but you're not looking for anything formal?
Um...
Because that would mean we have to have it for another meeting?
Well, I was thinking September 11, we could come with our suggestions of what we think is beginning.
Okay, and talk about it.
What we would like changed.
Okay.
And then, of course, this is going to go on all winter, so we can always go back and tell them more things, but just initially, because they've invited us to.
Yeah, no, but I thought they stopped in December. So you're saying we could keep doing it after that?
What I'm thinking is we could do it.
Oh.
We plan on meetings till July.
Yeah.
But we can keep offering things?
Well, that's what I'm thinking, that we could go there with our initial proposals and say that we would like a further meeting.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I'll second the motion. I don't think you had a second, did you?
No.
No.
And just one comment. There is a form attached for folks to fill out their suggestions to be provided to the Charter Commission. A motion's been made in second to approve CA 3E. All those in favor? Open public forum, announcements, comments, questions, presentations. We have A1, Tax Assessor, David Robert, explanation of motor vehicle phase-out program. Mr. Robert?
Good evening, Town Council members. Basically, what I want to do is bring the Town Council up to date and the residents up to date on what is this year's state budget and the phase-out for the motor vehicle tax. As you may recall, they tried this once before, didn't get very far, but this year they did add it to the state budget again, and we will be in the process of issuing tax credits. And the reason why the town of Tivonan will be issuing tax credits is that we mail our tax bills in June. The state budget wasn't signed into August 3. So at that point in time when we issued a bill, we were in compliance with then the state law. When they signed the state budget, it was retroactive. So we are in the process of issuing these credits. The Town Council will need to take a vote tonight if they want to agree with the abatement. The total abatement is $154,260.86. That basically represents 7,210 accounts, and the average account will be credited $19.40. So if someone has paid their first quarter and they're paying their car tax quarterly, the $19.40 or whatever, that's the average, but whatever their credit is will be assigned to their account over the next three quarters. If they paid in full, the credit will roll over into next year's tax bill.
Okay.
So the process is that we had our outside vendor, Opel Technologies/Vision, they've run a utility. We are all set to create this abatement rule once the Town Council approves it. Tony Lynn, the tax collector, will apply it to each individual account, and then we just take it from there. I did talk with the Town Treasurer and Tony Lynn, and we came to the conclusion that issuing the credits the way that we're doing it is probably the best for the town.
So it'll be issuing credits on their subsequent bill?
Correct.
For their...
Subsequent bill if they paid in full, so it'll be in next year's tax bill. If they're paying quarterly, they'll see that credit on their account this year.
Any questions from the council?
I have one.
Mr. LaBeau?
If somebody asks you who paid in full wants a refund cash, is that possible? Or everybody has to agree to this?
No, no one has to agree to it. If they do want a refund of this year, if they've paid in full, Tony Lynn will have a form available for them to submit a request to have a refund check drawn out to them.
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards?
So the question I have is, as it pertains to, so it was $154,000 or so, a little over?
$154,260.86.
Is this going to alter our property tax rate?
It is not.
Because we obviously have a budget in place.
This is going to be a state reimbursement.
Okay.
So the state, in theory, is going to reimburse us 100% in theory.
One question for communicating out to the taxpayers.
Good question, thank you. So soon as I leave here, I'm going to actually post it on the website. It's going to be uploaded on the website. There's going to be a press release. I've already given it to one of the reporters, and we'll post it also in the tax collections office.
Okay, that's good. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
C, Town Council sitting as Board of Licensing, advertise licensing subject to meeting all legal requirements, public hearing. C1, Herbert Lyrix LLC, 29 Crane Avenue, Westport, Mass. DBA Lyrix Bar and Grill, 4 Stafford Road. Request for Class BB liquor license, subject to meeting legal requirements. This was previously approved with restrictions as a transfer of license from Benjamin's to Lyrix. Hi.
Hi, again.
Yes, one thing happened, and somehow the old license, your state taxes, somehow we can't pay them, we can't get a hold of them.
We can't even find out how much it is.
We came to Jody, and Jody said you better off just filing for a new license, because...
They won't tell us how much it is. If it was $100, we'd just give them a check, but we don't know. We didn't do any of this with the old owner. We don't know the old owner. Our hands tied.
So... So trying to continue what we were doing with the old owner.
We're less than two weeks out, and our hands are tied.
Any questions from the council?
Tony, you want to explain that further, because I'm kind of confused.
The original application was to transfer the liquor license from the prior, what name was it?
Benjamin's.
Benjamin's. The difficulty with that transfer is, is that taxes are owed to the State of Rhode Island.
On the Benjamin's license.
On the Benjamin's license. It can't be transferred because there's that hold on it for the taxes, and rather than, I guess they tried and were not able to...
We're not going to get a hold of this man?
Yeah, get things settled with the seller. So what they're here for now is to apply for a new liquor license essentially for that spot, a separate one, which I'm assuming the town has.
We were told there's three.
Okay. Is Benjamin's...
So this is Benjamin's license?
Well, essentially, they no longer have a license.
I got you, because we only give out so many licenses.
Yes, and then according... Because it's essentially Benjamin's license. And then according to what I understand, I could be wrong here, from what I understand through Lori, and the questions that I've asked is, at the end of this year, the old Benjamin's license will now drop those taxes and be free and clear, but we can't get a hold of this man. So we would just be stuck. We're just stuck.
They're applying for a new liquor license, and they've re-advertised for it. The only thing that I would ask is, is that because this is essentially the same application that was filed before, Councilmember Edwards made the motion to approve in that the same conditions that were in that motion be in this motion, because it's essentially the same business plan and operation.
Yes, we're waiting for the September 11 meeting. We were told about that meeting for the outside, so we're waiting for everything.
So keeping the same conditions on that license?
That's correct, yes. That's my recommendation, yes.
Madam President?
Ms. Hilton?
So, just to be clear, so this is for indoor liquor service on...
Yes.
Inside the building that...
Yes.
In this drawing on this picture, right? There's the pool table, the dining area, all that. That's where this is restricted to.
The same is what we have.
The same is what we have. We know that there's a different meeting on the 11th we'll come to.
Excellent, thank you. And Tony, do we, we don't have any responsibility as far as the state taxes go, do we?
No.
Okay.
No, you don't. For the license to be transferred...
The taxes would have to be cleared.
Yeah, that was not successful, but I guess essentially this is a revoked license at this point, so you go forward on that. If I can just respond to your first comment before I get to the second one. The motion by Counselor Edwards was to approve the BB liquor license, subject to meeting all legal requirements for the premises as defined as inside the building.
Okay.
And I recommend that that's what you do again. But on the tax issue, the license can't be transferred because there's a hold on that. And basically what they've done is abandoned the request for the transfer, and now they're applying for a new liquor license essentially.
Madam President?
Mr. Edwards?
Thank you.
Since this is a public hearing, I will need to open it to the public.
Okay.
Anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this liquor license? Chief Lakey?
I have stopped by with Mr. Hall actually to examine the area, horseshoe area in particular. They've done an outstanding job, or they've done, my hat's off to you, all the efforts they've taken care of, and completely got at the inside. They did call me and tell me that they want to do this so they wouldn't appear to be underhanded in any way, so we have no problems whatsoever. I'm speaking from the police department.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much. I went by, and the building outside looks really nice.
Yeah, we're just trying to make it town-appealing.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this liquor license for Lyrix? Anyone else from the public? Last call? Anyone from the public? Now close the public hearing on this item. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you. Given all the discussion, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the liquor license for Herbert Lyrix LLC, 4 Stafford Road. BB liquor license, subject to meeting all legal requirements with the liquor license, I'm sorry, with the liquor license being for the premise as defined inside the building.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Ananamous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. D, Appointments and Resignations. We have D1 Appointments, Planning Board, one vacancy, three-year term to 7/15/2020. We have two applicants for the position. 1A, Dave Perry, 78 Bramble Way, seeking new appointment. Mr. Perry?
Excuse me, Madam President. I had an email received from Kim Sunderland, is that her name? Yes. She has withdrawn her name.
Thank you, Mrs. Mello. Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. David Perry. You're applying for the Planning Board position. Could you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're planning, why you want to be on the Planning Board?
This is my second go-around for the Planning Board. My name's Dave Perry. I live on Bramble Way, and I've lived in Tivonan for 41 years. I spent 12 years on the Personnel Board, 12 years on a Budget Committee, and two years as a Town Councilor. I'm very familiar with the goabouts on a Planning Board. Actually, I've got a copy of the Land Development Subdivision Regulations, and I've been reading through them to get more familiarized with what's going on. I'd like to clear something up that I didn't clear up the last time. I know there's been some letter writing, and I don't know that's how we do business in Tivonan nowadays, by people submitting letters for you or against you. But these people who submitted letters against me really don't know me, and I'm going to tell you why. If anyone out there can find out where and when I ever voted for a mall, please bring it forward, because I never voted for a mall, never. What we voted for that night at the high school was the Planning Board's recommendation from the Planning Board for a mixed-use facility on Souza Road. That's what I voted for. Other people didn't, but that's what I voted for. As far as a casino, which is, you know, people write letters like Mr. Betancourt and Belanger, I'm sorry, Belanger and his wife, and Michael Sylvia, who doesn't even live in the town. He comes there for two days on Friday, Saturday, and Sundays. Again, I never voted for a casino. I might have, but that was in private, in a box. And if they know what I voted for when I was in that box, something's wrong. What I voted for is to let everyone in this town vote if they wanted a casino or not. So I personally did not say, yeah, Dave Perry, we're going to put a casino in this town. It's not what I voted for. And it's not what, these people are writing false documents, all these people. So you can take all this and just throw it away, because it's not true. And if you can find out where it is true that I voted for one of these things, please bring it forward. Any other questions? I just wanted to clear that up, and I hope that the newspapers will put that in paper tomorrow, because I'm sick and tired of hearing about it.
I'm certain that you're frustrated at this point, but there were letters to the Town Council both for and against your appointment.
Well, it seems like it's a game we have to play nowadays, which is not the way we do things, at least not when I was a counselor.
At this point, we have to ask, I think I asked this the last time, have you reviewed the comprehensive plan?
Yes, I have.
Have you reviewed the new comprehensive plan?
No, I have not had a chance, because it's in so many different hands from what I hear right now, that it's tough to get a comprehensive plan together, to look at it. When it's there, I will look at it, and I actually started going through it when I was a counselor, and I was comparing the old comprehensive plan to the new one, page by page. So yes, I did read it six months ago, but not recently, no.
Are you familiar with the Land Use and Subdevelopment Regulations?
I'm reading them right now. I'm on page, it's double-sided, I think it's 33. I do that on my spare time on a Saturday or Sundays.
Are you familiar with the responsibilities as defined in the Charter for the Planning Board member?
Yes, yes, I am. Again, I attended their meetings, not recently, I haven't since I've been away. Probably the last six months I haven't attended any meetings at all. But before that, I probably attended half the meetings in two years, yes.
Any questions from other councilors? No? Mr. LaBeau?
Nope, but with no questions, I'd like to make a motion to that we appoint Joe.
Dave Perry. Not me.
Joe's on the side, I mean Dave, to the Planning Board.
And I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries for three.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Mr. Perry.
E, Unfinished Business, Town Administrator, further discussion and vote on council goals. Mr. McGreevy?
Thank you, Madam President. So in your...
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. In your packet is the edited version of the results from the workshop, and then what was in your packet from the last council session. I suppose at this point, there's probably two approaches to how to go forward. One is to discuss the document in its entirety and make edits or changes as you wish, and then vote on it as one document, or go through and approve the vision, the guiding principles in each of the four goals in turn, and with discussion accordingly. All of those, either two choices, and however you wish, whichever way you wish to proceed.
We should probably review each section and see if there's any other comments from council members. We can certainly read the council vision. Item 1, the council adopts as its long-range aspiration to guide this and future goal-setting the following. A, a beautiful place to live with physical areas and a thriving, with diverse physical areas and a thriving cultural environment. B, a place with a strong sense of community, working together to solve problems with innovative solutions. C, a business-friendly place with a balanced economy. D, a regional leader for innovation, cultural attractions, tourism, and economic growth. Any comments from the council?
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards?
I believe that that sums up all of our discussion on vision for the town at the last workshop, and I agree with what Mr. McGreevy's put forward.
Any other comments? Do I have a motion to approve the council vision?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Ananamous. Two, guiding principles. In order to help create an environment where town government works well, the council adopts several guiding principles to be practiced at all levels of the municipality. A, a customer service focus by all employees and officials where tasks are tracked, followed through to completion, and regular updates are provided to residents and elected officials. B, development of town policies are based on thorough benchmarking with other communities and jurisdictions to adopt solutions that are proven to work. C, the council seeks to represent all residents in its deliberations and decisions. Any comments from council?
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards?
Again, like the previous statement, I agree with what Mr. McGreevy has put forward, and I move passage.
Any other comments? Any additions? Do I have a second on Mr. Edwards' motion?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Ananamous. Thank you. Proposed goals. The council adopts these long-range goals and near-term actions in order to make progress towards its vision. A, improve the business environment. The council will strive to improve the business environment in Tivonan by pursuing the following near-term actions. I, approve the comprehensive community plan in the fall of 2017. B, or actually, double I, complete a thorough zoning code overhaul to be in conformance with the comprehensive community plan, eliminate confusion, and seek the balanced growth envisioned by the council. In addition, the zoning review will leverage, when possible, zoning code from other communities where implementation has been successful, as well as outside expertise to better guide B, improve the effectiveness of boards and commissions. The council will continually seek to ensure that our boards and commissions have the tools to execute their prescribed missions by pursuing several near-term actions. I, provide adequate administrative support and subject matter expertise when required. Double I, develop and execute a thorough orientation program for all board members to include at a minimum open-meeting law requirements and the rights, duties, and limitations of the respective boards. I, three, enact changes to the structure of boards to appoint alternate members to ensure quorum, permit, and encourage joint board and commission meetings to address complicated issues and allow non-resident expert members when a specific required expertise is not available from the Tivonan citizen group. Sustain town finances. The council will take several actions to sustain and improve municipal finances, specifically I, reduce debt as defined by outstanding bonds, unfunded pension liabilities, and known deferred infrastructure investments. Double I, investigate potential economies of scale within town government for common services. I, three, adopt information technology improvements to provide better customer service at less cost. Four, develop a five-year financial plan to better guide annual budget development and provide a predictable roadmap for financial management. Five, establish a dedicated and restricted capital fund, capital improvement fund to address known and future town infrastructure improvements and capital investments. And six, develop a long-term waste management strategy for post landfill closure. D, strengthen the community. The council will seek to strengthen the Tivonan community and increase their trust in municipal government by pursuing the following actions. Improve communication with our citizens through, one, improving the town website layout and its content to better inform our residents. Two, developing an action-tracking system to provide better accountability of council/government tasks. Three, developing and publishing a series of periodic reports on the status of town government initiatives and major issues to serve as a town crier. Engage outside third-party evaluations/studies of major policy proposals and critical issues facing the town in order to provide objectivity, and encourage and sponsor more community events designed to bring all members of our community together in support of common projects. Any comments from the council? Any comments from the council?
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards?
I just have one comment on proposed goals. A, one, it says approve comprehensive community plan in the fall of 2017. As the temperatures already begun to change, and it seems like fall is upon us, and we have yet to hold any hearings relative to the comprehensive community plan, I don't know if the fall would be a good timeframe. Perhaps we ought to make that, you know, winter 2018, to at least give us some time to go through the hearing process that we've yet to go through on the comprehensive community plan.
That seems reasonable. I think we are, there is some activity going on with the comprehensive community plan, and I'm not sure if we have a complete document to go to public hearing yet.
Distributed, the plan has come from the planning board to the council. And that's the new one that I distributed in tonight's packet. We'd have to put it on another agenda to schedule, or you could schedule a public hearing on it. It's going to take a few public hearings, I would imagine, so you'll definitely be past the fall. Because I don't know when we, it's going to be tough to put that on in September unless you're holding special meetings, and that's difficult already to get. So I don't know how you'd stop before October. Plus, we have to advertise 21 days ahead.
Correct, yes.
Yeah. So you advertise, and we'll push it out, too.
Madam President.
Ms. Ryan. Ms. Hilton?
I'm wondering if we could, if we could take out in the fall. I am a little worried that we keep pushing, that we need to be aggressive about getting the comprehensive plan done. We don't have a current one on file with the state. Ours is expired, and because of that, we have a fairly large liability about certain kinds of development in this town because we don't have an adopted community comprehensive plan. We're also in a position where we can't take advantage of certain state programs and grant money because we don't have an approved comprehensive plan. So while I agree with councillor Edwards that fall might be a little aggressive, maybe we could stick with by the end of 2017 because this really needs to get done. And I'm just a little fearful if we push it too far out. One of these days, we're going to have a development proposal that we're not going to like, and we're not going to have a choice because we don't have an approved comprehensive plan.
Mr. Edwards, do you--
It's not like, I didn't really make a motion, per se. I mean, I would say that--
Could we set a time limit, like within six months? Could that be possible?
I'm incredibly leery--
Say, fall or winter, say, within six months from this date?
Well, here's another question. I mean, they're, these are our goals and objectives. They're not legally binding. I mean, it's not if we don't make it that something, you know, that the council goals police aren't going to lock us up. I just think that, you know, if we say the end of, by the end of the year, if we shoot for the end of 2017, that's our target. If we miss it by a little, it's okay, but, you know, that's, that's four months from now. I'd hope that we could at least, we'd have voted on something that we said we're okay with by the end of four months.
Madam President.
Ms. Edwards?
The only thing I would say in response to councillor Hilton is that, you know, as a, a lot of the other goals, as they address, you know, service from the town, you know, my mindset is that we want to under-promise and over-deliver rather than over-promise and under-deliver. And, you know, I know that there are no, there are no goal police out there, but this is a document that we're going to put forward as a council, and, you know, if we go into this knowing that there is a strong possibility we're not going to be able to make the end of 2017 based on just timelines that are required by law for, you know, going through public hearings, and, I mean, we still haven't even had a chance to discuss this, and I'm sure, you know, councillor LeBeau has some amendments, as well as some of the other councillors. So I just, I'm leery about putting forward a goal that is going to be very difficult, if not impossible, to achieve.
Madam President.
Ms. Ryan?
I guess I would agree with councillor Hilton, only because if we say the fall of 2018, we're going to be in the thick of budget, and that typically takes up so much time that I'm just wondering if we could at least try to make a concerted effort for the end of 2017.
I think that was one of the things that we discussed, was that we wanted to move things along and do things instead of putting it on the back burner, putting it on the back burner. So, you know, that's why I said if we set a date or a goal of within six months, I don't think that's unreasonable. That's why I said six months. That would give us till February, which, you know, pretty close to the end of the year, but at least we'd have something to work towards.
Madam President.
Mr. LeBeau?
I have a question for the attorney. If a project's already started, and this comprehensive plan is not approved or is approved, are they grandfathered into what we don't have right now? For instance, the housing going on Souza Road and Fish Road. Now, if our comp plan changes something like that, and these people have already started, we can't back out on them and say, oh, too late. I mean, we've got this new plan here.
After the regulations in effect, at the time an application is filed, govern the application going forward.
So just from that point forward, not back? Anybody who's already started is clear?
Yeah, passing, the enactment of a comprehensive plan is not retroactive.
Okay, perfect. Give it to me easier terms, will you? Yes or no answers?
There are no yes or no answers when you return.
That's not what they taught us to do in law school.
Okay. All right, so we have either the end of 2017, that's four months to be doable, is this doable within four months? It perhaps is if we schedule enough public hearings on this. And hopefully, we'll get it done. So, just to get a consensus, you, Mr. Perry, six months?
That's what I was shooting for.
Mr. LeBeau?
As soon as possible. Would be my answer.
Ms. Ryan?
Yeah, I'd shoot for, well, I agree with that, but I would shoot for the end of the year. Yeah. Just to try to get that.
I think I'd aim for the end of 2017.
To Stephen Davis?
Personally, I would be comfortable with, quote, early 2018.
I think the consensus is end of, end of 2017. Any other comments on any of these items?
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards?
Following that discussion, I move passage of the goals and objectives as amended to include end of 2017 for a comprehensive community plan.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, and discussion.
Madam President, I'm sorry, I didn't hear councillor Edwards' motion. Was that to adopt the rest of this document in its entirety, or only that one paragraph that we just, I couldn't hear?
That would be the rest of the goals sections.
The goal section, okay. In that case, Madam President, I do have some comments.
Please.
Under goals, A, Roman numeral two, I am a little bit, I am a little bit concerned about the thorough zoning code overhaul. And I say that because in the community comprehensive plan, in the version that's coming in front of us, there are a number of specific, large sections of the zoning code, almost all of it, but that are subject to being reviewed as part of the community comprehensive plan. And the state law requires that upon adoption of the community comprehensive plan, we have 18 months from the time that we adopt it to complete those zoning actions. So I'm not sure whether or not this is a little bit in conflict in that we're better off having some language that refers back to the zoning code review as determined in the community comprehensive plan, rather than our taking on a commitment that's separate from another legally binding document that the council's going to adopt. The language, seek the balanced growth envisioned by the council, I think that's great because that's what we all want. But the balanced growth, the vision for balanced growth, again, is in the community comprehensive plan, and whatever we adopt will be that. So I'm not sure whether or not the council would want to have a vision of balanced growth that's different than the vision of balanced growth in the community comprehensive plan. So I am a little, a little bit worried that we're potentially creating a situation where we have something, the council has a vision and a plan for zoning code rewrite that's different than what we'll be adopting in the community comprehensive plan, based on the language that's here in this paragraph. Tony's looking at me like I have three heads.
No. May I?
Yes, please.
Under the case of West versus McDonald, your zoning ordinance has to comply with the comprehensive plan. Otherwise, those provisions that don't are considered to be ineffective. In the case I'm citing, to me, there was a discrepancy in the city of East Providence between the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. The planning board made a decision on a subdivision based on the zoning ordinance, and that later on was struck down by the Supreme Court. So your zoning ordinance has to comply with the comprehensive plan.
Right. I think that that was the, I guess that was the point that I was making, that this language should reflect our support of the, whatever we adopt in the comprehensive plan, as opposed to potentially having something that is different.
Just let me ask a question. It does say in conformance with the comprehensive community plan.
It does say that, although then it goes on and says, and seek the balanced growth envisioned by the council. Where, you know, again, these are goals, there are no goal police who are going to arrest us if they're not, but it does create a potential conflict in that the council has a vision versus what the vision is in, in the comprehensive plan.
Madam President. Ms. Hilton has the floor.
Thank you. My next comments are about a different section, so I'll defer to the president as to whether or not she wants to have discussion about this, and then may I go back to my other items?
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I was just going to respond to one of the things that Tricia said, that I also had put at the end of balanced growth envisioned by the council and added in, and consistent with the comprehensive plan. But in number one, it says that one of our goals is to approve the comprehensive plan. So then I thought, well, let's just, you know, that might be redundant. It might be an extra backup, but then I thought we might not need it. If we're approved, if we're going along with the comprehensive plan, we're going along with it. So I don't know, Tricia, if that's what you're thinking, you need to put an extra phrase in or not. Just so that I mean, am I, do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying. I actually think that, that if we stuck with something that said to complete the zoning review as determined by the adopted community comprehensive plan, and/or support the growth or something, and eliminate, you know, confusion, I just think that it would be better if we had one consistent vision here.
Madam President.
Mr. McGreevy?
This might be a case where the author got a little bit run on in his sentence, and maybe simplicity would be the better way. And the only word that's sort of operative here in the goal is complete. So, complete a thorough zoning review overhaul to be in conformance with the CCP. That's really maybe all that needs to be said. The rest of it was my flourish.
But I think we also, at that meeting, we discussed changing some of the ordinances, oh, actually, this is specific to zoning. All right, we had talked about changing other ordinances to, not just the zoning ordinances. Sort of like sign, the sign ordinance.
Then, may I suggest that we actually make a three, that--
What?
The sign, signs are regulated by the zoning ordinance.
Okay. All right, so it's all, yeah, okay.
Madam President.
You have a comment on this?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Since I did have a motion and a second on the floor, I'd like to amend my motion to strike everything after CCP under, what is it?
A.
Yeah. 3A2. So, just to read, complete a thorough zoning code overhaul to be in conformance with the CCP, period.
Do I have a second on the amendment?
Second.
I think it was Mr. Perry. Mr. Perry, do you agree to that amendment and second it?
Which was?
Mr. councillor Perry, on 3A2, strike everything after CCP, so it would read, complete a thorough zoning code overhaul to be in conformance with the CCP, period.
You agree? Thank you, Mr. Perry. Ms. Hilton?
Okay. Are we voting on that one?
No, not yet.
Okay. Under B, Roman numeral three, where it says dates, enact changes to the structure of boards to appoint alternative members to ensure quorum permit and encourage joint board and commission meetings to address complicated issues. And then it says, and allow non-resident expert members when a specific required expertise is not available from the Tiverton citizenry. Our charter for all of the boards and commissions states that members must be electors. So any board or commission that is, that was created under the charter cannot have a non-resident on it. And I also believe that there are certain state regulations about some of the boards and commissions and their makeup. I'm not opposed to the idea of looking at having alternative members where allowed by law, and the encouraging joint and commission meetings, you know, are good, but I think the idea of non-residents on boards and commissions is something that is in the charter committee's purview and definitely not ours. And I would certainly feel uncomfortable about adopting a goal right now that's not technically legal.
Madam President. At the, am I good?
You--
Yep, that one.
You-- Yes, Mr. LeBeau.
At the meeting that we were at, the non-resident thing wasn't to put them on a board, it was just for their testimony, as I thought, when we were there saying, like, we needed somebody to come in if we didn't have an expert on a casino, like we got the guy from, whatever it is, Twin River, when he came down from Lincoln. That's the kind of testimony I thought we were speaking of when we did this. I didn't know it was to appoint somebody to a board. I thought it was just, like, when we called him and asked how they handled their casino money. We don't want to appoint anybody who doesn't live here. That's where I thought we were at when we sat with this.
And I, I agree with that. We were talking about they could, the board and commission could invite expert people to come in. So I don't think that we need, I think this, and actually, I think we cannot enact changes to the structure of the boards because that's in the charter. So I think we have to strike this whole item from the goals.
Madam President, I suppose we could either strike that phrase or change expert members to another expert testimony, expert participation, something like that, if you want to capture what the essence of the workshop was.
Well, I think anything to do with the structure of the boards, we cannot do to, like, appoint alternate members. That has to go before the charter review commission.
Madam President. To councillor Dean Mederos's earlier query, this is the sort of thing I think that we could discuss and potentially bring to the charter commission to say, you know, would you consider, I'm not sure personally that I would ever, like councillor LeBeau, consider non-resident-- I'm not sure personally that I would ever, like Counselor LeBeau, consider non-resident members, but, you know, whether or not they're changing the structure or the number of people or whether or not we could have alternates, those are things that we could bring to the Charter Commission to address.
May I make a suggestion? I'm sorry to interject, but I do think it's important, and I wasn't at the meeting, but I'm sure that it was part of the discussion, that there should be an effort to make sure that the boards are at full strength to ensure quorums, and perhaps there should be some language in there about a more active recruitment for volunteers to boards and commissions. Because I do think that that's an issue throughout the State of Rhode Island to get people to serve on these very important volunteer boards.
And that's a true statement. And in our discussion at this workshop, it was more of a, what this was trying to capture was, we're discussing how people become familiar with a board or commission, how they could get up to speed, and we likened it to, like, the zoning board, where you have the five-member board, but you have two alternates. It gives those two alternates time to learn and also solves the quorum issue by having alternates available. So we were thinking of that type structure for the boards and commissions, but as I look at this now, that would be part of a recommendation or a suggestion to the Charter Review Commission.
Okay, actually, can I just jump in for a second?
Yep.
Because you raised, that's a good point. Zoning boards, their membership is governed by state law. Several communities in the state, because they're concerned about the quorum issues, they've gone to three alternates, so that there's that third person available just in case, you know, it's a larger pool of alternate members. That's something that can be done with a change to the enabling legislation. I believe 14 communities have already done that, including your neighboring town of Little Compton.
Madam President.
Mr. McGreevy.
With the exception of the last phrase about the non-Tividon citizens, if we change the first word to "seek changes," then from a goals aspirational point of view, you're not stepping outside your bounds of what you're legally able to do, you're simply saying, "We're seeking changes that can get to the first two clauses."
Madam President. Paul, how would you feel about the word "explore"?
Just as fine.
Okay. I like the, personally, I like the word "explore," it doesn't commit us, but it means that we will and we can look at alternatives.
Instead of enact?
Yeah, enact. We cannot enact, but explore, we can.
If we could change the first word to "explore" and eliminate the, everything after the comma that begins with an "allow non-resident," then I'd be more than happy with that.
Everyone okay with that?
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards.
I will accept the motion to amend my prior motion, if Counselor Perry will second.
I'll second.
Very good. Any other?
Yes.
Ms. Hilton?
Under sustained town finances, Roman numeral five, "To establish a dedicated and restricted capital improvement fund to address known and future town infrastructure improvements in capital investments." I'm under the impression that in order to establish something like that, we would need, that would need to be adopted by the voters at referendum.
It would.
So we can't simply make this a goal without...
Shall we explore it again?
Yeah.
The Charter Commission could do this too, by the way.
Yeah, so I, that's also, and, yeah, this one, I don't think we can actually accept as a goal because it's outside of our purview currently under the charter.
The Charter Commission really could do that. But, yeah, but the voters would vote for it anyway.
Yes, they could do it too, just a couple of rules.
Right. But if we changed that word to "explore," it would give the council the opportunity to potentially discuss that with the Charter Commission and to discuss it amongst ourselves?
Yep.
Okay.
Everybody agree with that? Mr. Edwards?
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards?
I will accept a change of "establish" to the word "explore" and amend my motion.
Mr. Perry?
Second.
Very good. Ms. Hilton?
And finally, under D, Roman numeral three, "Encourage and sponsor more community events designed to bring all members of our community together in support of common projects." I think that that's a great objective, but I am a little worried about the law of unintended consequences here. And we had talked about this before, a little bit with some of the events, about having a policy around the town council or the community sponsoring events. And I'm worried that if we have an open-ended goal that says this, you know, we've been lucky so far, the events that we've been asked to sponsor have been wonderful and everybody likes them, but it doesn't mean that someone isn't going to show up and ask us to sponsor an event that, you know, most of us would find horrifying, but we have no policy, we have no anything, so how do you tell somebody else no? So I think it's a great goal, but I think part of doing this is some sort of policy around it, and that includes a fiscal policy so that we understand, you know, what we're committing to financially. I don't know exactly how to reword it, but this just feels a little too open-ended and has the potential to be Pandora's Box.
Madam President.
Ms. Ryan?
Just a suggestion, cross off sponsor. You could say, "Encourage more community events," and then I'd also cross off "in support of common projects," because all you need is a community event. But that would be, so if you cross off the sponsor thing, then you take care of, you know, anything, town responsibility, and all you're doing is saying, "Yeah, you want to do this? Oh, that sounds great." Is that, because we're not sponsoring it, and that would be, that's the key word here, isn't it?
It's the key legal word.
Well, yeah, that's what I was thinking. Is that, because it's not going to, it's not going to hurt us to encourage people to do the art project, encourage people to do, you know, something on the beach or something else. It doesn't have to be a common project. It would just try to pull a community together.
Madam President.
Make it libel, the town libel. Is that...
Well, it's not, I mean, it's not, I'm not so much worried about libel, because I think that, you know, Tony would stop us from doing anything too. I'm just a little bit more concerned that once you put that there, you know, that means that you have to encourage this from everybody and anybody, and, you know, there may be people who have ideas for events that, you know, aren't really, Paul's laughing, because he knows there, you know, is the potential that we have people coming forward to us, asking us to sponsor events that are not really necessarily the council's or even maybe a majority of the community's cup of tea, but now we've said we're going to do this, so how do you say yes to one person and no to somebody else? I just feel like this is very open-ended and potentially what is a good-intentioned idea about encouraging community events, you know, puts us in a position we hadn't thought about.
Do you just want it off completely?
No, I mean, I think if we took, I think, you know, your idea of just encourage more community events, because that way it's sort of, I mean, I said this before, personally, I think we should come up with a policy about sponsoring events so that it's there and it's in writing and it's consistent and it's fair. You know, but for now, if we just said to encourage them, that would be a good way to go.
Madam President.
So, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you. Just to give some context to this item, I think that this comes out of the wildly successful more recent event that we sponsored down at Grinnell's Beach, in encouraging more town community building events, I think is a good thing. And then as far as, you know, this goal legally binding us to accept and sponsor any event that should walk through the door, I mean, Mr. Solicitor, in your opinion, is that staying, is this, is D3 stating that we are going to accept and sponsor anybody who comes before the council with a request to have a town-sponsored event?
No, but it's the policy to encourage it, so I think that's where the concern comes in.
Okay.
Madam President.
Mr. Perry?
I like what Christine had said, "Eliminate and sponsor," and then after "together," eliminate that. I think that line makes sense that way, if you eliminate those two lines. I think that way it's encouraging people to run things, but not, doesn't have to be sponsored by the town. They can come to us and ask us if we want to sponsor, but we're not obligated.
So no public...
Mr. LeBeau, any comments?
No.
You agree with that change?
Yes, sure.
So it gets the consensus is to remove and sponsor in the last part of the sentence, "in support of common projects." Mr. Edwards?
So just so we're clear, it's going to read, "Encourage more community events designed to bring all members of our community together," period?
Right.
Correct.
And then if somebody wants to come and ask us to sponsor, they can do that.
I would just say before I accept this amendment that these changes do make it feel like we're not really attempting to bring our community together, especially this course of discussion.
No, I think it does. I think by encouraging community events, and I think the word that is most important here is to bring all members of our community together.
Right.
It's all, it's not just one group or one subgroup. It's to bring all, and that was the whole purpose in our discussion, was to bring all the members of the community together, you know? And I think we have accomplished that.
We discussed the south end and the north end, and we said, "Let's bring them all together instead of singling them out," and that was the whole intent.
In that case, I will accept the amendment.
And I'll second.
Very good. Motion's been made and seconded and has been amended, and the amendments have been accepted. All those in favor? unanimous. Thank you.
Madam President.
Mr. McGreevy?
Juan, thank you very much for working through this process and sort of getting this documented. This provides guidance to me and the administration as to what your consensus of where you want to go on certain things. This obviously doesn't solve every problem, but you now have, think of it this way, you have a Christmas tree you can hang ornaments on as you desire, as you see goals that need to be addressed. So, you know, consider it a living document and not just something that goes on the shelf. Thank you.
Madam President.
Mr. LeBeau?
I have a question for Paul. Are you going to rewrite this so I don't, so we can have a good one? Because I got, like, lines everywhere.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It'll be amended and provided to the council. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. McGreevy, for all your efforts on this. Financial business, F1, David Robert, tax assessor, request approval of 2017 motor vehicle abeyment credits due to state budget. Since we've had the presentation from Mr. Robert, do I have a motion to accept this item?
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? unanimous. F2, Town Administrator, discussion on new or used vehicle for Neil Hall code enforcement. Mr. McGreevy.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, Neil Hall, the building director, hasn't provided me with a recommendation of what direction he wants to go, so I would like to ask you to continue this so that I can get a recommendation from my department head.
Will we have something for the next council meeting?
I hope so.
Okay. All right, we'll move, continue this to the next council meeting.
Madam President.
Mr. Edwards?
Before we move on from this subject, just out of curiosity for the administrator, can we get a history on how many vehicles have gone through that department?
The building department?
Yeah.
We can. I personally don't know at this point. He's had this vehicle since I got here, but we can find that out for you, yes.
Unfortunately, you've had a very short tenure thus far, so.
Yeah, generally speaking, the building code enforcement office usually gets the hand-me-downs of the other departments. So he does get a variety of cars running through that office.
But he never gets, does he ever get a four-wheel-drive vehicle? It's always usually...
I don't believe so. He usually gets, like, an old police car.
Police cruiser.
Yeah. And in the past, those were never four-wheel-drive, although we do have some that are four-wheel-drive right now. All right, we'll continue that to the next meeting. New business, G1, Town Solicitor, request for counsel to deny claim for Gallagher-Basset Services regarding alleged accident on Main Road.
This is a, what's known as a subrogation action. Gallagher-Basset Services is an adjustment, a claim adjustment firm, and this is for an accident which allegedly happened at Narragansett Avenue, I'm sorry, the Main Road at the intersection of Narragansett Avenue. It appeared to me from what I received that the accident took place on Main Road, it was a pothole. The plaintiff was injured by stepping into that pothole. Because it appears to me that this happened on a state road, this is not a claim that I would recommend be sent to the inter-local trust, and rather, I am asking your permission to send the letter that is in your packet as G1, notifying Gallagher-Basset that the town is not, does not have liability for the claim, and they should contact the State of Rhode Island.
Madam President.
Motion.
Mr. Edwards?
Based on the solicitor's testimony, I would like to make a motion to direct the solicitor to deny the claim from Gallagher-Basset Services regarding the alleged accident on Main Road.
And send this letter.
And send the letter.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion and comments? Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor? H bids and requests for proposals, none. I, Town Administrator, announcements. I, one, update on status of fire trucks. Mr. McGreevy.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Chief Floyd, I wonder if you could give us the actual today's update? The letters, the note from Chief Floyd summarizes the status on Friday or Thursday of last week, but if you could give us an update today.
First of all, I'd like to sing the praise of Paul Russo and the Public Works Department for working really hard to get our vehicles back on the road. As you know, we have one engine that is down because of the accident that happened earlier in the spring. The cab is being built for that, and right now, Hurricane Harvey is flowing over where that vehicle's being worked on. So let's keep our fingers crossed.
And you can get a new truck?
Well, that's working. Engine three had gone down. Paul has made some repairs to keep it in line right now, and he's watching that to see if there's another issue. Engine three is the one that runs out of Crandall Road. The engine in the south end has a pump issue that is developing. However, when I wrote this to the administrator, it had gone down because of brake issues at the time. It was not able to stop. So he is able to get that back on the road right now and working on it. Engine five, which is the truck that the firefighters themselves reconditioned about a year or so ago, that is in active service in the north end. We have reached out to the trust, which is our insurer, who is working on getting us a rental truck, which is coming through the claim for the damages to engine two. We have that truck here, there's some minor things that have to be taken care of it, but one of the issues that we're running into it right now to get that truck in service is a title, because they're actually giving it to the town of Tividon with the lease agreement that the solicitor has looked over. The last agency that had that to register it under their name gave it to the State of Rhode Island, waiting for a new title to be issued. We don't have that as of yet, so we're still working on that. Hopefully, I'll get it resolved by the end of the week. So right now, all three trucks are front line. We're in good shape at the moment.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Okay, thank you, Chief Floyd.
Thank you, Chief. Madam President, one further announcement that didn't make the agenda. In conversations with Chief Lakey last Friday, Chief Lakey has indicated his intention to retire in the near future, and we're looking at specific dates when that would be best for, one, finishing up some work he's doing and so forth, so more on that, but certainly would like to give my congratulations and to Chief Lakey's future. would like to give my congratulations and to Chief Lakey's future career, whatever that will be, in retirement. That's right. And thanks for his service to Tiverton. Thank you.
And so I assume that we'll have a agenda item on the next council meeting for going out for advertisement for a police chief? Very good. Thank you, Chief. Jay, council announcements? Any announcements from the council? Ms. Hilton?
Yes, Madam President. Councilor Ryan and I, not so much an announcement, but would like to use our time in this to see about, a discussion about scheduling a special meeting to discuss council governance and leadership, to see if other councilors would be interested, and if so, could we ask Madam Clerk to schedule it for us?
Madam President.
Ms. Edwards?
Councilor Hilton, could you provide some clarification as to what you're asking to do?
Well, asking to have a special meeting amongst the council to discuss council governance and, as well as council leadership, I'm not, do you have a specific question?
In order to call a special meeting, you only need to have three councilors request it to the town clerk, and she can schedule a special meeting. I believe that's what's in the charter.
I'd be in favor of that.
I'd be in favor of that also.
So in that case, we can work with Madam Clerk to schedule a date?
Correct. Any other councilor comments?
I have one.
Mr. LeBeau?
There was a letter sent to Tony that me and Ray Johnson are blood brothers through marriage or, what did it read? Tony, could you please tell me, tell everybody what that letter was that you, we spoke about?
There was an email that there's a relationship between Council LeBeau and Mr. Johnson. The relationship wasn't specified.
Well, you know, it was either through marriage, this letter supposedly said, so me and Ray are brothers in God, but that's about it. So, yeah, he's got a better tan than me, but that's it.
Thank you, Mr. LeBeau. Ms. DiMediris?
It's not really an announcement inquiry. I've been getting phone calls for over a week now, well, probably, more than that, about the camping that's being done on Eagleville Road and whether or not that's legal. I did inquire about it. I think I spoke with the police chief about it outside. It just happened to be a conversation, and what I understood was the building inspector was supposed to go down there and speak to them and give them an amount of time. This has been going on now, I would say for at least three weeks, and the campground is getting bigger and bigger. Now they have a hot tub there. So, and what really worries me is this isn't a watershed area, a camper, and how are they disposing their ways? So if somebody could just look into that and maybe put it on the next.
I think that would be Mr. McGreevy's to provide an update at the next, at the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Hi, Neil.
I don't know if you've seen it, but it's great.
Any other council announcements? Kay, Town Solicitor announcements?
Well, I usually often don't make announcements, but I have to for this meeting, and I want to start by apologizing to the town council. I received a access-to-public records complaint from the Attorney General. It did not come on the date it should have. For whatever the reason, the Attorney General has the previous town solicitor still as your legal counsel. So it was sent to him. He contacted them and said he no longer represented the town, and it finally came out to me. We answer so many of these APRA complaints that are not directed to the town council, that we just send our answers in, and in this instance, the complaint was directed to the town council. I did not inform anybody, and I apologize for that. It's something I should have done, but we have answered. There's a 10-day time limit to answer these things. My usual practice with these APRA complaints, which are quite frequent, the cities and towns that you can imagine, is to get the things out immediately. So I did that, and we answered on August 24th. I have a copy of the complaint, as well as a copy of how we responded to the Attorney General. I'm going to give them to Nancy now for distribution, and again, I apologize, I probably should have sent that out immediately to the town council, along with my thoughts on how the town should be defended on this. And if anybody's interested, Nancy, Nancy has the copies now. In the future, I'll make sure that you know that when these APRA complaints come in, what the complaint is, and how the solicitor proposes to respond to them. If you have any questions about it, be happy to answer them. I apologize, because I did not say anything or notify you immediately that the complaint was against the town council, by the way, and had to do with a document that was referred to at a meeting, so.
Tony, was that complaint against me?
Not against you directly, Randy. It was directed to the town council, but it had to do with that document that you had, I think it was at the June meeting.
Was that the Sasquatch one or my laundry list?
I think it was the laundry list.
Oh, okay. Can I, can you make sure I get a copy of everything?
Well, I gave it to Nancy for distribution.
Okay, thank you.
Now, so you know, with APRA complaints, they are handled by the Attorney General. A complaint is logged in, the governmental body, the public body is allowed a chance to respond. That's happened. The Attorney General will make a determination on that and issue a written decision. And I'll let you all know when that happens.
Very good. Anything else, Mr. Solicitor? Okay. L, Town Clerk, items and announcements?
I just wanted to let the council know, I did put an advertisement out for the Budget Committee vacancies, and I put a date, I believe of September 15th, so we would be able to put it on our 20, I will submit any names on the 25th. I have a few names that had already submitted, but I did do the advertisement. And the only other issue I have is on the workshop for the planning, planning organization, whatever. Since we're hitting vacations in times, and it seems like everybody would like everyone to be there, what about a Friday night, September 1st, which is this Friday?
No, I can't.
Then we're going to have to go till September 27th, which is at the end of the month.
How about the Tuesday you mentioned earlier, and now September 5th?
September 5th, there's some people that couldn't make September 5th. Joe couldn't make it, and Council Edwards isn't sure whether he can make it.
Madam President, if I may, for Madam Clerk, as I mentioned earlier, I'm not going to know what my work schedule is until I get the PIN set up for that, or until I get back home to my actual work laptop, so any discussion about tentative dates is, I can't give you an answer until later on.
Okay.
What was the other date, Mr.?
The other date was if we do, don't do it on Friday, we would have to go till the week of the 25th, which the council meeting is on the Monday. So I was thinking the Wednesday.
I couldn't make the Wednesday, and I couldn't make the Tuesday.
Which would be September 27th.
Yeah, I can't make, I can't make that. I could make the 26th, though.
Any other suggestions?
I may be in Dallas, Texas on the 26th, so.
Okay.
If it's still there.
Okay, I'm just letting you know, if I don't get a consensus of the seven, this seems to be harder to schedule in some meetings. I'm going to have to offer a couple of dates, and if there's a quorum, there's a quorum. I don't know how else to arrange. The administrator sent out emails, I sent out emails, but we can't. It's difficult, there's a lot of vacations this month then.
How about September 12th? Do you consider that?
September 12th, there's a planning board meeting.
But we don't have to have it here.
We don't have to have it here. I could, if, but he's not sure of any date he's going to get back.
Yeah, I can't give you a guaranteed answer, like, period, right now, so.
Madam President, one of the issues with the planning board meetings, we also would like Sue Gill to be able to answer any questions that might come in, as well as Neil Hall.
I do have a question. I do understand the planning board has a meeting, and I think that we would like Susan's input and Neil's input, but given how hard this is to schedule, is it worth at least us, if we can all make it on the 12th, assuming Counselor, if Counselor Edwards' schedule permits, that we at least make a start, and then potentially, you know, have a, have a secondary meeting where, where, I just feel like pushing it out till the end of September's a long way away, given the workload. So if that's amenable, I'd be willing at least to make a start on the 12th, if Counselor Edwards could make it.
Are you going to need the solicitor there? Because I'm not going to be able to make it on the 12th.
As long as we don't vote on anything, we're probably safe without you.
Yeah, I don't know if I can make the 12th, but certainly if you can have it without me, that's fine.
I was going to say, if that's okay, so, but I mean, if there are some people like Counselor Edwards, Counselor Shabbat just said, if they, you know, if they say it's okay, you can hold it without me.
How about before a meeting, maybe a half hour before a meeting or something like that? Well, any Saturday you could do it. Depends when people.
I'd be totally happy to do a Saturday.
Because it wouldn't be long.
My only comment on the Saturday thing is, you know, that's all well and good, but I will request volunteers to help me make up the missed time for painting my house.
Actually, if you want Neil Hall to be here, he's, we would have to pay him, right?
Probably.
So, you can't, yeah.
I said Neil Hall. You have to bring him in on a Saturday? I don't know, but.
We brought him in for budget and stuff. We've brought in a lot of administrators for that.
Well, I guess the other thing is what you had mentioned, maybe a half an hour before, right? Is that a possibility for people to come in a half an hour earlier?
You think it's going to be a half-hour discussion?
No, but we can, an hour before? I don't think we're going to get it done in one session. That would be lovely if we could.
Why doesn't John, oh, you can't make that Tuesday, probably.
I can't make 12. Nope.
Why don't you shoot for the 26th, seeing how, that's a month away, and maybe we can all make it that night?
Yeah, I can make the 26th.
Because by then, maybe John will know what his schedule is, we'll be able to do that.
I do know off the top of my head, because I had a discussion today, there is a flip of a coin chance that the 26th, I'll be in Dallas. I know that for sure, so.
But he doesn't, he's not sure about the 12th.
Well, why don't, I'm not sure about anything like that.
The only way to get to my schedule is to have the PIN in order to get into the corporate email, which I can't get unless I get in my corporate email, so.
Madam President, or may I make a suggestion? Maybe since folks have said here that, that if it's possible, we're not opposed to a Friday or a Saturday, and then there's the 26th, but maybe Madam Clerk could try again with some dates and include in some Fridays and Saturdays, and if it turns out we can get everybody before the 26th, we'll try for that. If not, if Counselor Edwards is available on the 26th, we'll try for the 26th, but maybe we should just throw out some more dates, but include some Fridays and Saturdays.
Send that email out.
Pardon?
I said I'll send the email out.
Yep.
See what response we get.
I can usually make a Friday, it's just I'm not called this Friday, that's my problem.
So just tell him to call.
Okay. Is that it? Madam Clerk? Mr. Edwards?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed executive session. Town Administrator, potential litigation, 4246-5A2, Ray Lou Realty Motocross, 691 Brayton Road.
Do I have a second?
Madam President, discussion, please. Tony, I just have a question about the first closed executive session. Since Mr. LeBeau has said that he is a brother with Mr. Johnson through God, and since he told me last week that he cooks at these events, should Mr. LeBeau recuse himself?
Cooked at what events?
The motocross events. He told me he cooks at his events. He said he was supposed to be there that Saturday we talked about. That Saturday we talked about.
If he invited me, I'd be there again.
So should he accuse himself of it too?
Well, you know, the legal answer is, is he getting paid for the cooking?
Probably not.
No, he's eating the profits.
That's the next question, but, you know, all.
Are you getting paid for the cooking?
Cooking what?
Cooking at the motocross.
I've never been there.
You told me that you cooked there.
No, I said I was supposed to. I've never been to Ray's place. I don't even own a motorcycle. He's not my brother. I don't own a motorcycle. I wasn't there on the race.
I know, and I heard you said that you.
Of course, I said I was supposed to, but I never showed up.
I'm just asking.
If I have to recuse myself from Ray, then anybody who has a friend on this council can never vote again.
I am just, yeah, not because you're his friend, I just was asking, Tony, if you're involved in these events, should you be here? That's all I was asking. I'm not avoiding you being there.
All right, so it becomes apparent that Mr. LeBeau is not involved in these events, so we have a motion and a second. Mr. Perry?
Yes.
I object to this being in closed executive session. This whole thing, talking about somebody else's property, should be done in public so that everybody can hear who's saying what about what. Until it goes to actual litigation, this is not something that should be heard in executive session.
Potential litigation is appropriate for an executive session. I will be discussing possible courses of action for the town, which I don't, I think is appropriate to speak privately with my client, under the attorney-client privilege. That's the purpose of having this in an executive session.
I still object.
It's okay. Ms. Hilton?
Yes.
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 Counselor Ryan?
Mr. Edwards? Oh.
Ms. Ryan? You've agreed to go on to executive session?
Yes. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
We are.
And continuing in closed executive session, Town Solicitor, litigation, 4246-5A2, Pelletier v. DiMatteo, M. 14096, and Town of Tiverton v. Pelletier and Tiger Tree Landscaping, C.A., number NC100058.
Second. Yes.
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 Yes. And continuing in closed executive session, Counselor Ryan, litigation, 4246-5A2, update on Four Corners litigation.
Do I have a second?
Second. Yes.
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 Did you say yes?
Ms. DiMediris?
Yes. Yes. And continuing in closed executive session, vote on matters from executive session if any.
Second.
That's discussion.
No?
That's the later on.
All right, then I leave it off.
Yeah, because we can't vote in executive session, so that shouldn't even be there.
That's open.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. We are now in closed executive session.